The MSBA partnership continues. We're still working, obviously, on Sterling. And the construction people are doing work on the outside of the building. They've done a lot during the break, which is a terrific thing. You're completing the construction documents that we forwarded to the MSBA. And then internally, we're working on to see what schedules, because we will not have a genation there in September. So we're working on schedules to see what we can do and how we can fulfill the requirements of physical education for those Sterling students. So making really tremendous progress with Sterling Middle School and the core program. We'll also be refreshing the SWAN statement of interest with the mayor's permission to keep forwarding that as we've done with Quincy High School and Central and Sterling as well. So that would be a really great thing in the core program. The accelerated repair program, again this summer. Beechwood will be getting windows to windows, to doors and roof, also boilers in the accelerated repair program this summer. After then Howe, Beechwood again, Wallaston and Marymount will be getting brand new boilers. So that partnership continues and our maintenance staff continues to do such a terrific job as well as Laura with her communication with MSBA. The other couple of things, we have Lincoln Hancock Family Night is in your, the information's in your packet, as well as the Parent Academy that we have tomorrow evening at Central. That will be a follow-up on the 26th as well. So I think there'll be a lot of parents that are very interested in the Homework Treaty, Parent Academy. Program newsletters are there with BAM, Extended Ed, Student Support, Health Services, all there. And also wanted to thank the City Council and the mayor, mayor's office, as well as maintenance team as we work through the whole water analysis process. The City Council and the mayor's office worked together to have that funded. So all the repairs, now they'll be funding for, the repairs that we make at each site. So I want to thank them for their continued support. The Massachusetts Music Educators Association, Matt Tim Karu, our music director, was there with our kids and Danielle Harbord, the concert band from Quincy High School, and then four other Quincy High School seniors, the senior chorus, Leanne Goff, Emily Barker, Emily Crosta and Marcus Johnson were also a part of that very, very elite group. So with that, I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Moving on to whole business, we have before us the proposed this evening, the policy book revision to section one. A motion to accept. Ms. Lebo?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the revision to the first section of the policy.
Second by Mayor Koch for real policies.
Mr. Bergoli, yes. Mrs. De Meaches, yes. Mrs. Hubley, yes. Mrs. Isola, yes. Mrs. Lebo, yes. Mrs. Mahoney, Mayor Koch, yes.
We got a new business. Dr. Christopher, you have presented.
You do. I'd like to ask Ms. Halli to come up.
Members of the school committee, Mayor Koch and Dr. Christopher. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to present to you along with my esteemed colleagues of central registration, Nicoletta Pratt, Ophelia Liu and Pat Cardarelli, all about the Office of Central Registration. We are thrilled to have the opportunity to highlight the important work that this organization does to successfully enroll our newest English learners in the Quincy Public Schools, as well as to provide family and community support to these students and their families. So our presentation overview, we will explain our mission. We'll present to you our recent enrollment data and trends. We'll give an overview of staff members and their roles, highlight recent changes to central registration. We will provide a step-by-step process of how a new English learner is registered for school here in Quincy. And we will explain how we provide continued support to students and families. So there are three central points to the Office of Central Registration's mission. Point number one is to provide enrollment services for all new immigrant families whose first language is not English and still wish to register their children for school in Quincy, Massachusetts. Our second important point is to collaborate with all elementary, middle and high schools in the completion of the registration process, including language assessment for ELS in the Quincy Public Schools. And our third part of the mission, which we feel is very important, is to welcome all immigrants, new immigrant students and their families to the Quincy community and offer support as they acclimate to American schools and culture. So this slide gives you a kind of a general overview of our enrollment of new English learners through central registration over the past three years, from 2013 to 2016. You'll note that the numbers are trending upwards each year, and last year being the largest we've ever had, with 371 new English learners enrolling in our schools through the Office of Central Registration. As an aside, I found out today from Ophelia, who is really our data cruncher and analyst, that we have just passed the 300 student mark in a number of students that we have registered this year. So that will give you an idea that most likely we will surpass our number of 371 for this year. I'd like to turn now to the presentation at this time to Ophelia, who will give us a little bit more detail about the recent trends in the ELL student enrollment over the past three years.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I will present some data and analysis about our new EL student. This slide shows the number and distribution among different school of new EL student in the past three school year. As you already seen in the previous year, the number of student we register increased every year, and we registered 371 student last year. And among these 371 new EL student, Quincy High School got the largest number with 58 new student. It almost double the number compared to 2014 school year. And for middle school, Atlantic and Sterling got the largest enrollment. And for elementary school, Parkah, Lincoln Hancock and Maso, they got the largest enrollment. Since lots of Asian family, they live in the area of Wallaston and North Quincy area. That's why Atlantic and Parkah, they got the largest enrollment. And in past few year, we had more student. They come from Central and South America and also from Middle East. And most of these family, they live near Quincy Center. And this explain why Quincy High School and Sterling and also this year, Paul Middle, they got large number of enrollment compared to previous year. The next slide show the distribution by grade. And you may notice that we had the largest number of kindergarten and 11th grade student in past few year. This is because we register kindergarten not just before the school year. Right now, we register them throughout the whole school year. And this number does not include those student registered in school through the normal registration and schooling process. And you may also ask why we only have so small number of 12th grade. This is because we only pay student in 12th grade at the very beginning of the school year. After that, we usually will pay student in 11th grade, so that they have enough time to finish their school requirement, for example, NCAS and the high school credit requirement for graduation. And this slide show the distribution of student by their primary language. Almost half of the new students' primary language is Chinese. In last year, we also noticed that the number of student whose primary language of Indian, Portuguese and Spanish increase. And family with primary language of Chinese, Vietnamese, Portuguese and Spanish usually need more language support, for example, translation service when the family communicate with the school. On the other hand, most Indian family, when they communicate with the school, they usually they don't need any English support, because most parent are well educated, well educated with at least a master degree and fluency in English. And the last analysis show the student fluency level. More than half of our new student are level one. And we notice that most student, they that came from China, Vietnam, Central and South America, they usually have a lower fluency level, most of them at the beginning level. And even with no English when they just arrive from this country. Now I will turn.
Thank you. So as you can see, a lot of these new trends have prompted some significant changes that we need to make in the Office of Central Registration in order to accommodate our growing numbers and changing populations. So this slide shows that prior to 2015, central registration was open two afternoons a week for a total of four hours a week. We have since changed that, knowing that we need a lot more time to be able to register our students and get them into school quickly. Before the construction of the new Quincy High School, the Office of Central Registration was housed in the lower level of Codington, but moved to the Bradford Library in the summer of 2011, and that's where they are currently to this day. At the time, before 2015, there were five part-time staff members, and the majority of the registration process was done by paper. So there was a lot of photocopying and a lot of paper moving between schools, between the office, to other programs. And sometimes students were also enrolled directly at the schools unexpectedly or perhaps without knowing that they were English learners. And they might have missed out on some of the important steps that were part of the central registration process. So seeing the needs of this growing population and also some stricter regulations from the Department of Education about identifying and enrolling ELS in school, we were able to hire a full-time staff person and an additional part-time staff member as well, so that we could open every day, and Monday through Friday. And we also moved to using electronic registration rather than paper for our enrollment process, which has really streamlined the entire enrollment process and has given us a chance to get kids into school faster, which is really the important piece. In 2016, after a very busy year, we realized that we needed an additional full-time staff member in the office during the day. So with federal grant funding, we were able to get, we were able to hire an additional person. We were very pleased about that. So as you can see here, we've listed the central registration staff members and their roles. The central registration lead administrator is Nicoletta Pratt. She supervises and oversees all of the functions of central registration, including intake and enrollment. Central Registration Assistant Administrator is Ophelia. She completes the pre-registration profile for every student on ASPEN, and she collects and analyzes the data on the enrollment trends and also assists in all of their office functions. The central registration nurse, Pat Cardarelli, with us, you'll hear from her in a few minutes. She manages all of the health-related procedures and paperwork that is included and important as part of the registration process, immunization records, health records. She assists families with appointments for physical examinations and any other medical concerns. We also have two intake team members. They're not with us tonight, but they are incredibly responsible, important, because they are responsible for the full intake process, and that is handling and copying all of the required original documents, compiling the enrollment forms with the families, collecting data on family, important family information that we receive about the family's background, educational background as well, and they offer language support and translation. We also have a tester, WAPT tester. The WAPT is the WEADA Access Placement Test, crucial to getting an fluency level for each of the students, so we know how to place them in schools. We have our additional full-time staff member, the family liaison, who also couldn't be here tonight. She's responsible for welcoming families. She provides school and community resources, follows up with families after the process is over, and also is involved in the entire function of the office. We have an additional person with us, although this is a wonderful opportunity, they're not Quincy Public School members. This is from Quincy Asian Resources. We have the Community Outreach Director, who is in our office two times a week, and this person provides information and consultation on specific community resources, on social services, on language assistance, anything that new immigrant families would need in the community. So we're very pleased to be able to have her with us. So as you know the saying that it takes a village to raise a child, well, it also takes a village to register a child for school. So throughout the whole registration process, the central registration office collaborates regularly with the departments that you see here, the English learner education department, the director myself, the EL department heads at the high schools, the EL teachers at the middle and elementary schools. They also contact very often the student support services department, working with senior director Mark Appeal, guidance counselors at all of the schools, and also the homeless coordinator when the necessity arises that the contact be made that way. Special education department, the director is often working with central registration along with the team administrators of each of the schools. And finally, and most importantly probably, the school administration, so all of the principals and the secretaries who work very hard to make sure our students are scheduled and ready to start. I do want to add one other important group of people that weren't mentioned on the slide. Quincy High School is our host for the central registration office, and the Quincy High School security team has done an excellent job in making sure that the families coming through the door are recorded and they are escorted up to the office. And it's been a wonderful opportunity having them help us, and we are very thankful to have Quincy High School support. And now I'm going to turn this over to Nicoletta Pratt, the lead administrator, who will run you through the process.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nicoletta Pratt, and I'm the administrator of central registration office. I would like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to present and the process and the progress of our office. First, I'm going to introduce the process of registering a student to school. Step number one is making an appointment. There are two ways to make an appointment. Number one is when families call, the families call our office and we schedule it over the phone. And the second one is when they walk into our office and we schedule an appointment, a later appointment, or we assist them right away if we can and if time allows. After we make the appointment, we go over the list of the required documents for registrations. And the documents, as you can see, are listed up on the slide. So we ask for a photo ID of the parent or guardian, whoever's coming to register the child. And if the child has a guardian, then we need a guardianship letter. We need a photo ID of the student, a first certificate, two to three proofs of residency that they're Quincy residents. We need, which is very important, immunization and health records as well, school report cards, two emergency contacts other than parents, and also if the students were studying in different states other than Massachusetts or other cities from Quincy, we ask for disciplinary record and for transfer slips. The intake process, this is my favorite one, and I think this is the fun part, because this is when you get to meet the families, you get to meet the students, and they tell you all about the countries that they come from and different stories. And by the end of the interview, we built this great relationship with them, and so it makes the families feel so comfortable and not stressed, because it's very hard to move to a different country. Sometimes they ask to come back and just visit us or just say hi to us. So the day of the appointment, the family is welcomed in our office, and they're asked to sign in. We have a sign-in sheet. The intake person introduces herself to the family and to the student and takes them inside the interview room, where the intake process begins. The intake person is the one who fills out all the paperwork while parents give them the right information, the information that we ask for. In general, this process takes approximately two hours. It can go a little bit longer, it depends on the translation that you have to do. During the interview, we open a new folder, just think of this, these students don't have any new folders. So we open a brand-new folder, and we collect the original documents, which we will make copies at the end of the interview, and we will return them, the originals, we keep the copies. And the medical records, they are given to the nurse for processing. The registration packet, we have a sample for you. On top of the sheet is, on top of that folder, there's a check-in list, and then inside it, there is an appointment paper, and inside is the registration packet. So those are all the forms that are filled out carefully and explained to the family by the intake team member. As you can see, at the end of that registration packet, and it's in bright yellow, it's a very important document that we have been using since last year, and it's called the ALSEC, which stands for, it's right, their English learner student information form. This form is so important, and it's intended to be used for gathering additional student and filling information in order to aid Quincy Public Schools educators in making informed decisions about these students once they go to their schools. So now I would like to turn it over to our office nurse, Matt. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Cardarelli, I'm the central registration nurse. It is the responsibility of the central registration nurse to make the student ready to enter the Quincy Public School system. All medical records are reviewed and registered by the central registration nurse. A copy of the student's ID with a birth date for the requested documents, all original immunization and medical records, a recent report of a physical exam. The required documents are, again, a copy of the student's ID with a birth date, up-to-date immunization, TB risk assessment and TB testing, a current physical exam, and if the student has a documented health history, will require a medical clearance from a physician to ensure the student's safety in the school environment. To review and register, the central registration nurse will review all information given, and the family will be informed of the student's medical needs. They will be given a paper of the needs to be given to the doctor, a copy of the form is included in their package. Once done, they will return to the central registration nurse. The nurse will complete the medical information and sign off, and the student is now automatically ready to begin school. Thank you so much, and I'll return into bed.
So I'm going to talk about the initial assessment of our new ELS. One important part of the registration process is assessing new students for their English language proficiency. This usually occurs while parents are continuing with the intake process. As you've heard, it's a long one, so this is a chance to kind of do two things at once. All students are assessed for a language proficiency in English. It usually takes about 30 to 45 minutes, depending on the student's level of English, as well as their age and grade. The assessment that we use for language testing is the WEADA Access Placement Test, or WAPT. The WEADA Access Placement Test is aligned with WEADA Access Annual Assessment that we give every year, so it works very nicely, because we don't have to translate scores to understand where the level is. It's a very well-designed test that goes right into the expected levels that we receive from the access test. The students who place between levels one and five, if you remember, there are actually six levels, six being they're ready for mainstream classroom work. Anybody who places between level one and five will receive EL services in their new school. So at that time, we provide an official EL parent notification letter at the exact time that we get those scores from the WAPT, so parents are aware right away that their children will be receiving EL services in their schools. There are additional assessments for incoming high school students. We have a wordless math test, which is really a great tool for the high school department chairs, so there's a good indication of where our students fall in the skill level of mathematics. Even though they may not have the English language to support word problems, there's still a strong understanding of the concepts that they have. And finally, an additional writing sample that is scored at central registration. And those tests assist in a grade placement, a better grade placement and class placements for high school. So that's Nicoletta.
Here I am again. Okay. After the interview is done, the families are, they are notified of any outstanding documents, that they must be completely prepared for the students start school. And we call these returns. The returns do not need to make an appointment with us, they can just walk in, unless we have a student, we're talking about students that they are 18 years and older, that they like to do interview by themselves, they do not have their parents there. And then when we have to test them, we have to make a schedule for them, to schedule them an appointment so they can take the test. Also, the very important part is if the families cannot provide us with two to three valid proofs of residency, and the number is extremely large in here, and this is where we get tremendous help from attendance officers, all three of them. We inform the family about the residency check that will happen. And after the residency check is complete, the attendance officers, they notify, they return the, we have a packet for them, they check it off, they initial whoever did it, John Dondero, Natalie Kelly, Jill Green, and they bring it back to us, which tells us that the student lives there. If we do have any further questions, we go for night check, that we call them, night checks. Now, after this process, that means that the folder is all complete, of course, if they came back and everything is all set for the nurse, and then happens the pre-registration on ASPEN, and Ophelia is going to talk about that.
When all the paperwork is complete, we will input student data into ASPEN and make it as pre-registration status. Data input to ASPEN include the demographic information, the EL information, and also the assessment information. And starting from this school year, when we identify a student with limited or interrupt formal education, we also recheck a special checkbox call on this line. And this is the state requirement that we need to collect such information. Okay, once the data input to ASPEN, we will send out all paper document to school. We will collaborate on the document, different set of document for school, for the secretary, for school nurse, and also for EL teacher. And for high school student, we also prepare extra set of document for math teacher and school counselor. And we are very proud to present that central registration office keep the same date they refer in the past two years. This means that when the student's document is complete and is ready to school, we input the student data to ASPEN and send out all paper document to school on the same day. So on the next day, the school secretary receive all the document, and at that time, the student can start school.
So as you can see, it's quite a process. As we mentioned in our mission statement, an important part of our mission is to welcome new families and ELS in the Quincy Public School District. Oftentimes, as Nicoletta had mentioned, this is the first experience for families trying to register their children in a foreign country. It can be very stressful, very confusing and nerve-wracking for them, and we want their experience to be a good one. So we do everything we can to make our first impression as Quincy Public Schools employees and representatives, to make sure that it's really the best impression we can give. So we have, as I said, we treat the central registration office as a welcome center. It's very comfortable, we invite you all to come, it's a great place, there's lots of life. It's very comfortable, we invite you all to come, it's a great place, there's lots of light, it's in the back of the Bradford Library. It's very inviting, we have a waiting area with games and toys, magazines. It's really something that we, you know, we allow kids to run around, it's as long as everybody's. Very friendly staff, you've met many of them here. We have many additional languages that we can communicate with the families in, so Mandarin, Cantonese, Taiwanese, Spanish, Greek, Italian and Albanian. And we hope to get more someday. We have also welcome folders. This year, we've been handing out welcome folders to the family and this includes some really helpful information about the Quincy Public Schools. So, Nicola has some samples. We have elementary, middle and high school folders. There's a superintendent's welcome letter, important school contact information, lunch forms, transportation forms, information about English language services, English learner services, school year calendar, instructions also on how to log into ASPEN because of course, our ELs' parents also have to receive their report cards and student information through ASPEN, so we have a translated version of the instructions of how they can get into ASPEN. We also are very pleased to be offering new backpacks to every student who comes through central registration. And I have to thank Keith Sagala and Janice Earler and the Quincy School Community Partnership because they provide us with backpacks for all students who come through. And this is really something special. All right, well, I'll just go on, you all have the presentation, right? We're almost done. We also provide continued support to our families. We wanted to make sure our families felt supported even after central registration. So, as we mentioned at the beginning of our presentation, we were fortunate to have a second full-time staff person who acts as a family liaison. And our family liaison works with our families both during the registration process and also after. Two to three weeks after the student's start date, the family liaison will contact the family via telephone for a short conversation, so we actually called to see how things are going. We want to make sure our dads, they feel comfortable with their child starting school. And they, and we have had great responses. We felt that both the parents and the children have been very comfortable, very pleased and feel really connected. This is important because we've really built a strong connection to the school system and we really are pleased about that, so. Okay, going on, on the paper version. The final slide is about our connection to Quincy English Resources. They have been really wonderful with us. They have offered us this community outreach director who comes to our office two times a week and provides consultation with families for any community and social service needs that it may have. They offer information about their adult ESOL classes and any other types of support that may be of use to the families. So, it's really, it's really a special experience, central registration. Don't worry, we're gonna. And before we take questions, I just wanted to say how wonderful it is to work with such a dedicated, caring group of professionals. These are truly experts at their jobs. They have taught me so much in the last two years. They are excellent at what they do for our new ELs and their families. Their immense knowledge of not only the registration process, but also the immigration process and cultural competency is incredibly helpful. I am so proud to consider myself a part of this team and I want to thank them for their incredible job that they do every day. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Anybody on the committee have questions? Mrs. Lebov?
I have a couple. First of all, great job and I can't believe what a great organization this is. I think we struggled with this for many, many years, so it's really great to see this team and how well you're working together and how welcoming lots of the families. I have a couple of quick questions, though. For students who are SLIF, how do you place them and make sure it's age-appropriate?
That's a very good question. So, the majority of our SLIF-
Does anybody know what SLIF means?
So, students with limited and interrupted formal education. So, these are students who come into our system who have skipped years of school or they've stopped formal schooling or they've had intermittent patterns, either because their families have moved to different cities or they have had, they come from war-torn countries where school wasn't happening, political issues. We are seeing more students coming in now who are considered SLIF. We identify them through the number of years that they have been out of school and also, we have their records, hopefully we have some of their school transcripts and their school records that can tell us where they've been in and out of school. Sometimes they come with no records and we have to go with that detailed information that we get from them through the interview process to understand. We don't have a formal test and the state does not have a formal test either. They're asking us to go through their, our understanding through school documents to be able to understand where our students are. Grade placement is tricky, it's simple at the high school level because we actually have in our EL classes, all grades mixed, nine through twelve is mixed. So, we can place students more based on age than on grade level. Obviously, if we have a student who has not been in school for a while, we'll need to have, allow them to get the number of credits that they would need to have to graduate within the years they're able to stay in the school system. So, we have to look at all of those different pieces. If we see that SLIF students are coming at the elementary and middle levels, again, we try to place them according to their, to their age, but we also understand that they may be behind, which may mean that we have to have some additional opportunity for support, either student support, additional literacy. We're in the process of training our middle school folks for literacy so that they are also teaching literacy skills beyond what English language development skills look like. So, it's tricky and we're learning about it, but the state is asking us to record who is there now. And so, we're doing our best to make sure we have the appropriate information to check that box.
And how old do students do you have to take in?
Students? That's a hard question. According to our research, students can remain in school up to their twenty-second birthday. So, clearly, if a student who is twenty-one is coming without any past high school experience, they won't have enough time, number one, to complete the assessment, which is MCAS, and number two, to gain the credits needed for high school. So, we have to go through each student who comes through. Anybody after eighteen, we need to look at carefully to make sure that they could, number one, possibly graduate because of testing and also, number two, gain the number of credits they need to finish. And we have had some students come in at a late age who have been able to finish and actually passed the MCAS.
So, that's up to age twenty-two. Age twenty-two. I have a part of the question for you. When you're gathering your documentation, and obviously, some of these kids are going to have difficulty getting that documentation in, is there a regulation at the state level about how much time that can take? Or, I mean, if somebody appears on your doorstep on a certain date and they still don't have their proof of residency or their medical records, at which point do you have to take them in anyway?
We, that's a good question, too. We do bring them in, I mean, obviously, we cannot wait, and you may be able to jump in with us, but we don't wait that long. We will, proof of residency will have our attendance officers begin that process very soon. We do not wait, how long do we wait?
Um, for proof of residency, we do not wait at all. Even though if they have a piece of paper, I've asked them, just give me a piece of paper that says that you live somewhere, please, this is your address. And that's where we go in and we add down there, that's our language between us and the attendance officers, and we say "flag", which means like, they're gonna go there, they're gonna check in if they lived there that night and then they're going again after this kid starts school. But that doesn't stop us from getting them to start school. It's pretty much, pretty much all families and students are pretty good with documentations. The only place where we struggle is, like I said, the residency, that's the one, and the medical.
Medical is most important.
And the medical, Patty can talk about this one because we are having, we did this big collaboration with Manna and we've been doing some field trips going there. And Patty's the one who helps them, she knows better than I do, she's the nurse. So, she helps them setting up an appointment with Manna and they do a financial appointment first, where they set up all the paperwork and everything else and they work things out so the children can have their immunizations. But immunization-
So, the medical is always gonna be-
Always.
Immunization has a requirement, I think that is a must.
Any other question?
I have a few. I'm a little bothered by the fact that some men give a piece of paper and say that's where they live, when everybody else is required to show proof of residency with a couple of different documents. I think we all should play by the same rules.
We still do, it's not, I mean, they still have to-
We still do residency check. Yeah, we still do, we do residency check like multiple, not us, but the attendants, they are the best way how to prove that they live there. Now, let's think of this, these are people who just moved to this country. They just opened a bank account. A lot of, a lot of them do not have a lease, they do not have an electric bill because the owner of the apartment, they pay for electric, for water, for gas. But the attendance officers, they put them on that night checklist and they go there at night. So, there are multiple checks.
We don't accept leases, anyway, is a proof of residency.
That's true, we do not.
We do not, lease is not. So, basically, what we approve without a residency check would be electric bill, water bill, W-2 forms, Comcast bill. We, the lease can be a plus added to two of the other proof of residency, but yeah, lease is not one of them that doesn't require. So, we're very specific with the list of the, that do not, with the list of the requirements that we ask, proof of residency, that do not need residency check. I can tell you that ninety-eight, ninety-five percent of our cases and our students, they all need residency check.
Residency checks are also unannounced, so.
They are unannounced. We don't tell them when they go, we do not tell them what time or what day. We just tell them, stay home and somebody's gonna come and visit your house. And make sure you live there.
On the R, V-1, 2 and 3 forms, I think we've talked about this before and had asked it to be highlighted and I don't see it highlighted on the form that was presented this evening. And it's regarding the statement of the state law, which says, any person who violates or assists in the violation of this provision may be subject to remitting full monies back to the city or town. And I thought we had talked about that a year or so ago and I thought that was taken care of, but the form I saw tonight does not have that.
We'll check with the attendance office and make sure that it's reflected right.
Well, I'll tell them we highlighted them all. And is it obviously translated into their languages correctly?
R-V1, R-V2 and R-V3, they are translated in Chinese.
And every other, every other language that comes in, that comes in, we make sure that we translate for that.
Thank you, any other questions, Mrs. Lebov?
I just have a follow-up question to that. So, if you do a residency check, do you at some subsequent time require the documentation? So, is this, when somebody has a residency check when they're in the kindergarten room, do you ever say, well, you've been in the city now for six months, we want this documentation to follow?
We don't follow.
Uh, yeah, after they just go to school, then it's, I think it's the attendance officers that they follow up on them and the school, yes, they do do that, but not as a office anymore. Once they are out in their own schools and then they take-
The schools have their responsibility to follow up on them after central registration.
There is a requirement to follow up residency after you've determined residency?
I don't, I don't know that.
It depends on the notes that they make, the attendance officers.
So, there's no formal requirement to then bring in subsequent documentation? So, I understand somebody may not have the documentation to make. They've been for a year, they should have documentation of their residency, not just a night check.
We can talk again, we can talk with the attendance office.
It's just a, I just want you-
Ms. Mauley?
So, I realize that we're talking about EL up here and it is hard because in front of the country, you don't have any of these things. But just to, you know, the equities side of things, if you're new into the city, a new lease, we're doing the residency checks for everybody. It's not just for our students, for English learners. Because it's one of those things, and I know, because people question that, like, does the city of Quincy really do, or does the Quincy Public Schools, because it's Quincy Public Schools who does the residency checks. I know multiple families who have been renters who are very surprised that they were, they've been visited by multiple, multiple times. So, it does happen multiple times. When you don't, and just, and I also know sometimes it's not necessarily, I'm not outing, but sometimes someone might have a split family and they're trying to pick their schools they're going to and they can't do that either because if you don't have a bedroom for your child to sleep in, it's not considered your home, it's where the child puts their head to rest at nighttime and that's the district that your child has to go to school in. So, I've known, and it's just amazing to me because after you get the residency check, they call them and say, what do I do? And if you go to the school you're supposed to go to, like, you put yourself in that position. We're not gonna tell you that your kids can't go to school, but your kids do have to go to school in which district that they live in, unless you've requested and you were approved for that, but you can't sneak into any other schools. It's a lot of work for our, the people who are doing this work, but I know that it is being done and I'm sure there are families that still sit through the cracks. I can't believe that it can be a hundred percent accurate. I know it's something that we have to try really hard to do, but I do know that the effort is being put into it and it's evolved throughout the years that I've been on the school committee, even the department has and just the way that we're presenting it has. Does that mean that we're, you're more accountable? No, I think that's an excellent point. I know, I do know, this is, again, it sounds like I know a lot of people who don't. I also know in the, in the elementary school years, if somebody moves per se, they might say to the principal, can we stay? And no, we can't. So, if you are a renter and you move out of your school district and you're comfortable in your home school because you are going to that school, you, your residency dictates where you live, so where you go to school. So, you might be able to finish up a year, but you are gonna then have to do out-of-district placement and if you can get it, you can stay, but if you can't, you're gonna go to that other school. So, these things are all, and throughout my years, I've gotten those kind of phone calls and we work, we work, the Quincy Public Schools work as best we can with these families, but these things are really happening, so I can personally attest to all the conversations that I've had throughout the years, that it's hard work, though, and it's a lot of work. And three hundred, three hundred and seventy-one students this year and that's-
Last year.
That was last year. But that's also throughout, it's not like-
That's the full year.
That's the full year. So, it's happening, students are coming in at all different times. Central registration, is it open all summer?
No, we're, we close from June to August. So, the central registration, kind of the mad rush before school begins around August fifteenth.
So, you know, there's definitely, and I also, I've also, I was supposed to call my father and say, I'm awaiting for X amount of time to be able to go to school unless because they don't have an immunization. So, there's definitely, it's a work in progress with the families to make sure that we're able to educate their students, but that they're also following the regulations, the rules that we have in place to make sure that, you know, we're protecting our students, but encouraging the fact that we can educate students that are coming into our system. So, I appreciate the presentation and I understand the sensitivity and I do think that we can always evolve our process to make it better so that we can make it more accurate and make it, I don't think there's any one that's suggested maybe having a check-in with some of those families six months down the road just to make sure we have that paperwork. The bigger problem is if they move, because I think what happens is a lot of times people move multiple times and then it's harder to make sure that they're placed in the right schools. I don't know, we, they're not doing those kind of regist, rest- that happens when they tell the principal that they moved. But if they don't, then we might have overpriced schools for different reasons. I'm not sure how we fix that, but somebody should be capable to make it.
Thank you, Ms. Mauley, anybody else?
Well, thank you. This business of central registration is incredibly unique, every single case is unique. The process, I think, that you've come up with is extraordinary and Mrs. Lebov is correct, I mean, years back, it really was very, very, very difficult. I mean, years back, it really was very, very, very difficult. And families, student students didn't get into school on time, and that was very uncomfortable for these families coming in. But the transition is so, so important that they feel comfortable, even come back and say hello. But that comfort is so important for their transition, not only to the United States, but also to our school system. And I think we do a fine job because we have excellent people, the leadership, excellent, and so appreciative. Because where we were years ago is certainly not where we are now. We've improved incredibly. And so we appreciate the business that you work with every single day. So appreciate it. We haven't had you in here in a while, so you'll do your business. We'll have you back maybe in a year or so. But the work you do is extraordinary and appreciated every day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to say, do you intend for distribution?
Yeah, as the school committee, you know, certainly is aware, the Quincy Teen, I'm so sorry, the Quincy Teen Mothers program respectfully came to an end. You know, the wonderful educational journey, certainly that it was for so many years in assisting their women and their families. So as there is no existing program at this point in time, any remaining funds are subject to distribution upon dissolution. And in discussions with Mayor Koch, Mayor Koch needs to sign off of that funding, as well as discussions with Mrs. Lebo, looking at, as our last budget, subcommittee we talked about, a 2.4, a position of deficit and, you know, due to class size, as well as looking at the nursing position that came over from Quincy Teen Mothers that would really enjoy funding for the rest of the school year. So it would be around that 3.0 position. So the mayor has approved of that and is willing to sign off on that. Appreciate that. And again, discussions with Mrs. Lebo. And that nurse will also have a portion of her salary dealing with unaccompanied youth and homeless. And if there is a teen mother that needs assistance, this nurse will also be available for her as well. So I don't know if Mr. Mahoney wants to come up and just explain a little bit. Okay. But we would need a vote for that.
Mrs. Lebo?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the mayor's transfer of the funds and put them into our salary line to cover the deficit that we've experienced because of our commitment to class size.
One second. Let's hear the second. You mean a vote call?
Mr. Burgoli?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amiches?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Ms. Isola?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney?
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
And thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next, as you know, we've been a part of the social collaborative for quite a few years. Other members are Moshfield and Waymouth and Norwell, Situage, Mandolph, Frank Creek, Ohas, and Hingham. And Milton Public Schools has asked to also be a part, to be a part of that collaborative. And in order for that to happen, any of the school committees involved with the cities and towns need to approve of that. So again, I would like a vote for that.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mayor Koch, second by Mrs. Hubley.
Vote call, both of you.
Mr. Burgoli?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amiches?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Ms. Isola?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Now, thank you very, very much. I was working.
Out-of-country travel, North Quincy High School to Florence, Venice, San Antonio. Second. Vote by Mr. D'Amiches. Second by Mayor Koch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Out-of-state travel overnight, Sterling Middle School to New York City. Motion's approved. Motion's approved by Mrs. D'Amiches. Second by Mrs. Hubley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Overnight travel in-state, March 8th through 10th, by Quincy High School to the Student Council Conference in Hines. Vote for Mrs. Hubley. Secondly, Mrs. D'Amiches. All those in favor?
Aye.
June 14th through 16th, Central Middle to Camp Wing in Dutchbury. Vote to approve. Mrs. D'Amiches. Second by Mrs. Hubley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Additional business? Say no. Recollections, upcoming, school committee names will be at, on January 25th, at the Clifton Building at 6:30, and on February 8th at 6:30. There are some upcoming subcommittee meetings at the Clifton Building. On January 18th at 5 o'clock, the quarterly budget and finance, we presented. That same day, facilities and security at 5:30. Teaching and learning will be on January 3rd at 5 o'clock. There'll be a policy meeting on February 6th at 5 o'clock. Health, transportation, safety at, February 6th at 6 o'clock. And back on January 18th, there's also a policy meeting at 5:15. Moving on, reports of subcommittees, special education report by Mrs. Mahoney.
Thank you, Jackie. Good. The Special Education Subcommittee is on Wednesday, January 4th. It was held at the Clifton Building as always. Mr. James D'Amiches, Ms. Sabra Zola, Ms. Emily Lebo, that was in attendance. We also had Dr. Jessica Power, Ms. Sarah Anderson, Ms. Catherine Carey, Ms. Dawn Cunningham, Ms. Kate Graham, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Jacinda Kennedy, Ms. Molly, Ms. Ms. Pfeil, Ms. Eric Perkins, Ms. Roy, and our Quincy advisory to special education, as well as many parents. Director of Special Education, Erin Perkins, introduced the presentation on special education pathways in the Quincy Public Schools. We basically went through elementary and middle school and all of the special education programs that are offered through the Quincy Public Schools at different levels, also where the special education programs were placed within the Quincy Public Schools, and it was open for discussion. For the high school, there was some sensitivity around the fact that the PowerPoint displayed that they didn't have offerings for all grades, but that's gonna be taken care of. We were assured at the meeting that, although it may not be in the PowerPoint, that we do take care of all of our students sort of, and make sure that does, that those get taken into place. Because we know there were some issues last year, the equability between the two high schools. We went on to talk about many of the different programs, and all of these are in the minutes, so I'm kind of going through these rather quickly. We talked about strategies in both high schools and specialized programs in both of the high schools as well. Then there was an update from the QPAC Committee as to many of the different programs that were going on through, through the QPAC, from the Gingerbread House to going to the Enchanted Village, and upcoming transportation, the upcoming transition here and the collaboration with Ms. Sarah Anderson. That was all in the planning process, so that's gonna be something that's coming up. We also mentioned earlier in the evening that we have the Homework Academy that's coming up this Thursday. It's a two-week program. So two weeks from then, they'll have another program that's going to go over the results that people have done when they've gone home. The meeting is adjourned, and the next meeting will be coming up in March. And that pretty much covers the presentation for the Special Education Subcommittee meeting.
Any corrections, please? Say no. They're approved. Mayor Koch?
I make a motion, we go into the technical section, the purpose of superintendent contract discussions, with the caveat that we will be returning to regular session.
Second, Ms. Hubley. Motion, David?
Aye.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Ms. Isola?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
You ready? I'm calling any back to work, back in session. Motion's adjourned. Vote for Mayor Koch, second by Mrs. Lebo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Say no.